We can just do it from your computer, if you just, is this a video?
Yeah.
So you have to turn this on.
Yep.
Oh, I don't know, whatever.
No, no, there's a remote Cindy. You don't need it, yeah, I'll do it, just wait a sec. Looks like you gotta do a, it looks like you need to do an upload. Just tell her where, now I can't find the screen. This wants to finish an update. I'll save it there. Is it screencast? Just hit, when I hit that.
Yeah.
Welcome everybody, our call this meeting to order, we got the forum, let's, please stand and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the states of America, and to the republic, for which it stands one nation, under the indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we have the presentation of the cast of Unmatured Super Bowl Doris, video of the Star Spangled Banner.
Yeah.
Please rise for the Star Spangled Banner.
Do you wanna? Yeah, I want them to hear the next. Very proud moment. You're welcome.
All right, we have a couple of adjustments, the agenda is gonna change A, change the anonymity uh, double role in that, I and uh and E, triple role in that, I let's get down there, uh, need to approve the agenda for tonight. There you go, to uh
The answer is E, item E under eleven, action item team business, is to add, um, to change Roman roll two from grade five teacher to a grade four teacher, the original agenda said grade five that got posted last week, and then change, add Roman roll three, Kaden Pendleton, transferred from grade four.
And, so well, all in favor? Hey, I put up the motion for these two of those schools meeting minutes from May thirteenth, May twentieth, and May twenty seventh, of two thousand and five. All in favor?
Sorry. Sorry.
Thank you, Tori.
All right, public comment.
I better look at my sheet.
If you the leadership updates, Mr. Barry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have no changes or additions, but would be glad to answer any questions, if I know.
Have you got any questions? All right, thank you. It's Lori Johnson, sir.
Thank you, Lori.
All right, Lori, thank you. Sarah Huber, what do you have, Lori?
I do the same with that. How long do we want to be? I guess, me, I, so I guess the one highlight I just wanna share is that we need our, our report back from the collaborative conference. Yes, I haven't had a chance to review, but I'd like you to know that, uh, that's been completed, so I'm pretty excited about that, and that will help us with our goals for next year. And as you can see, we got a lot of celebrations.
As we did. Congratulations, Lori. Uh, thank you, have you got any questions, Mr. Corey Huber? All right, Brandon Rogers, that was very good.
Uh, I don't have too much of an update, our spring boards are finished, our track meet is in scale, even for the state meet, uh, Tony, fantastic guy, he's gonna take a solid year, so super happy to have him, transportation was awesome. Overall, our, our whole year is over, uh, that's kinda what I emphasize how I know what I successfully did, this has been, super happy to have the coaches that we have, uh, you know, moving on to next year, uh, we have a lot of coaches in place already, which is gonna help us, you know, kind of fill another successful year, I thought this year overall was awesome, so, just wanna kind of, uh, you know praise our coaches and the time they play, and obviously, you know, deal with the mind, so, uh, made a visual time. Super happy to have them, and I
All right, thank you. What's baseball team, you still? It's products, elementary.
The lives, the lives, totally been wrapping up lots of celebrations and trips and exciting stuff. Uh, and now we're starting to look for us next year with our other projects, and planning for next year, we've got summer school happening, getting, happening to fly and a lot of moving pieces in the building over the summer.
Good question. Casey. Congratulations, and good luck, nice job.
Thank you. You're not too worried. I'm hoping it might goes to me, we're not, doesn't go over to the spoke, nor
Andrew Level here.
I, I know she had a, uh, interview.
She had a brief conference, everybody read it? All right, that's for Janet Anderson.
And so, I just wanna add to the report, um, that, uh, under SC, um we, we have opened up for, we have open public comment period on our SC spending, this is titled one, two, and four spending, and so that public comment period is open, there's a form that will be posted on the SC page of our website, that has information about the grant and seats, um, to put from the public. And, um, and then I just wanna underscore, not really look for this whole thing, but I wanna underscore that, um June twenty second is the open house on the Hartley Hamish downtown lot, so that's from twelve to three, and I hope that everybody, uh, in town will come and check out this amazing booth. Yeah.
All right.
You're in time, that, twelve to three, well.
But you know
Sunday. And then on Monday, we still need to move them, or provide, well, I don't know. But it'll be on the other. I mean, on the water, water, the waterway.
All right, finance committee, uh, we had a finance meeting earlier, uh, details, we are uh, we have spent a little more than last year this time, but we also just spent a hundred and twelve dollars for our roof. Yeah, so that's a big deal, I've been hearing about that since a long time.
Yeah.
That is tough.
Well, we didn't print any floor.
Right, I can't, before I get left. So, all right, yeah, we're, we have about eighteen point six, three percent remaining. Uh, I'm sure we did twenty-two point two five percent remaining at this time. We spent on a little more than last period, uh and I guess that's all I could say, we're, we're in a good place, and ready to go, just, you know, days below, there's already been a sort of budget.
I know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's you too.
I love you.
All right. Yeah, yeah. All right.
Jason, questions for the finance committee?
Sure.
I want just clarification, but I know this has been kind of a talk that I brought up a couple times, and then, I think I've heard the answer tonight, but I just wanna reassure them, so, we started this budget process with the fear of with, in mind that it's gonna be, they, help, the health insurance is gonna be based on eleven percent increase. Then it got is that wrong, Kim? Yeah, well, let me finish, and then maybe you can press.
I'm just telling you.
Uh, let me get my thoughts at first, and then, then you correct. It was first based off of eleven percent, then it went up to thirteen percent, fourteen percent, but then we had a huge scare, that it was gonna be eighteen percent, we talked about this in the special town meeting, and Ms. Anderson reassured me that it was still going to be in the teens, or right around eight, nine percent, and I brought up the fact that in past meetings, I saw a specific number of three point two percent, that was the increase that we got, but we based the budget off an eleven percent increase. She reassured me in that meeting, that it was, it was not, the three point two percent was not, not correct. In my incorrect appearance, none, that the health insurance increase was three point two two percent.
Um, she said she wore it.
I have written down right here, but it was three point two two percent increase.
Okay, I thought she said four, but then.
Okay, if it's four percent, we still base the budget off.
We budgeted eleven percent increase.
So you misinformed everyone in that special town meeting, about what the increase was, because it was not eleven percent, and you kind of came at me saying that I was wrong, and that I didn't have my information correct, and actually, I did. So I just wanna make sure, that that number that we're hearing now, that's the number, it's not the eleven percent, it's not the big scare of eighteen percent. It's a three point two two percent, so now we, this budget that we're voting on tonight, is all skewed because we base it off a, a number that didn't exist in person.
Thank you.
I also have another question, real quick. Can the finance committee, how does, for information and knowledge, how does how does the superintendent send and get money from the town, how does that process work? Do, does the board and finance committee sign off on all the bills that go to the town manager? Or, or is kid, or is the superintendent just sending the bill? And get it back, how, how does that work?
So to date, the process in town has been that when AP is prepared, and payroll is prepared, the clerks, which would be Diane Hammond and Shelley, transfer or send over the warrants, and Kathy Onorado makes a transfer to our bank account to cover the funds, um, in the past week to two weeks, I'm sure you're aware, because you're obviously aware, uh, Dennis asked that we sign the warrants prior to them getting sent over, and so, we've agreed to do that.
It is, school committee signing off on those, or? Thank you.
So just the clarification, that hasn't been the case?
No, it hasn't.
Two years now?
The, um
It's, oh yes, it certainly has been the case, prior to your standing with school board, but the last two years, this board has not signed off.
Yes, they have signed the line, that's what we're doing as a policy, so what happened?
Signed the warrants, but as, as bills come in, and they get paid, there's no checks and balances, nobody on the board.
He, to the, to the, those sending the warrants to the town is just to initiate the transfer to our bank account. And then we pay the bills, and these guys sign off on the warrants, and I sign off on the prints.
While we're on the finance committee, I understand, we're all kind of here about here, but they might understand that there will be rejected, rejected, or is it an actual three hundred thousand dollars left over?
That's
Going to
That's a projection as of today, that's what Kathy said as of today.
There was left to spend after day, this would be years, ands.
That goes into the fund balance.
Three hundred thousand dollars into the fund balance.
Maybe.
And just
We'll know better in another month.
Okay. It was projected three hundred thousand.
At this point.
And last year
Last year was around four hundred something.
Four hundred thirty, four hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Policies are ready, we're ready to report on that.
Um, we mentioned, we have the policies, we were hoping that all of the models and table, as a new policy that we presented, so that we can get through all of the necessary processes that are required. Uh, I think we did that for the most part, there is one that I would be proposing to, thanks to the, some questions on it. Uh, so that will still be hanging out there, there are a couple, but when I present the policies later, there'll be three that I will post that we eliminate after we enter it, because the policies are covered by state technical law already, so we don't necessarily need our own policy for those, but as we get there, I'll go into them, and because, uh, the three that we're proposing to eliminate are covered under law, and those laws block away us with policies in place, and then can be conflict with those laws, and that's why we're, we've decided to step back. So, I'll when we get to the policies, I'll go through each one.
Right. Thank you. Item number ten, discussion items, no business, there is none that I'm aware of. For letting action items, either business, uh, needs to authorize a superintendent to hire employees, prepare enough school may rules during months, June, July, and August. Motion.
Thank you. I do have a good question about that, we still get like like a sort of, um, you know, a, a yeah, like an update, like a sort of confirmation, you go like in the set time or media, or like, this is who we got, you know, payroll and summer, these decisions, like, all the things we do now, okay. We'll do it, which one, I don't know if there's anybody in between, there won't be many, because that's not the standard ever, so yeah, and that makes sense, obviously, it's, it's not really, uh, your stuff.
Does the board still mean some, what, they still mean regular?
They have, yeah. But I do, so, for like the board, turn it over.
The board still mean, honestly.
Yeah, exactly, you just still follow the same procedures, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's a summary, it's a tight turnaround, so, uh, people wanna get their contract signed, or they're taking the extra off, so, this time of year, they want it. That's what I'm gonna be releasing, so. I just wanna make sure we look like, get to see the, yeah, there's one that I think is the okay, yeah, I mean, we're definitely doing very, this time, like, last year, we got, you know, and the year before, and the year before. And here, I, somebody made me go back and look, and then we've had tremendous turnover for years, but now it's like, it's less, it's much better.
So we need a second, come here, it's still second, all in favor? Yeah, she didn't, oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pause, oh, okay. All right, uh, we need to improve the adjustments to the school calendar, two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-four.
Yeah, the, the changes on, um, the school calendar for early release days, it has the dismissal times flip flopped, because we started this year dismissing high school first, and the elementary school second, but then for safety and bus efficiency, we flipped it mid-year, and did the elementary school first, and the high school second, and that didn't get flip flopped on the calendar, so, doesn't change any of our days, it's just, um, but it is a change to what you approved, so I brought it forward to you, so for next year, is it gonna be elementary? Yeah, for you to keep it the same way, because it was more efficient and safer.
Is the special federal in favor? Very good, thank you, uh, the guest reservations. Lane, turning grab one, ed tech three, that's residing effectively in Florida this year, and Tamiya Welch three of two, right to the thirty. Set the motions, acceptance of reservations.
Okay, let's see if that reservation.
All right, second.
Discussion of that, we have, uh, accident reviews for this time, which
I had enough of these two yet, but I have been doing that, I am so worried. Two, that's two.
All in favor? Everybody, all right. Yes, new hires and transfers, I've got, uh, Aaron, then high school custodian. New hire, transfer, Joanne Gomes. From no high school special education, ed tech three, to the elementary ed tech three, in the three K program. Eric Davis from title one to grade four teacher, and Kaden Pendleton, grade four to grade five. So I accept the motion, approve the new fire and transfers.
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor? Very good. Uh, good, uh, summer hours, what's going on, so thank you.
Uh, so we would like to post the, the summer hours on our website, uh, as soon as possible, so people, and then in the doorway, so people know when the offices are open, uh, so our administrative staff are covering the buildings, and principals are here in summer, but there's a lot of vacation that's taken during summertime, because, um, everyone's required to be at school during the student days. So in order to accommodate the hours in each building, and also not to hire a bunch of substitutes, we are closing, um, it's a little bit different at each place. Central office being open, um, Monday to Thursday, and Friday by appointment, Monday to Thursday would be seven to three. And then, um, the middle high school is open Monday to Friday, seven thirty to three, except for the week of June thirty to July six. Four, four, one, okay, and that would be closed that week, and then in the elementary school, um, set office hours of Tuesday to Thursday, seven thirty to one. Um, and then other times by appointment. So what if you guys aren't who knows that we can get it posted and set, and it won't be like changing a week to weekend.
Question on that? Questions, in all favor? Everybody? All right, I'll turn this over to, basically, there's a policy, basically, Joe, give us your policy.
Oh, right, awesome. Policy, um, so, the first policy, um BBM, handling that, that is one that we propose to eliminate at this time, um, it's, like I said, I, and then that's one that's covered under state of the law, because those laws do keep changing, that's just putting a policy in place, and we'll have to keep changing, but you'll refer to state that with that.
Because of the cost of the law.
Yeah, the collective bargaining agreement as well. Is that interesting? I have a question. Is that why this is like, that little paragraph being like, this has a school department for compliance, all the other provisions, I know, isn't black, because that's people like Keith, and then everything else is blue. We're actually gonna get rid of all of it, but the black post wall was in place before, so blue was what is added, um, for, for, yeah, that's a many. Yes, but these are not acquired by law, and as we were reading the permit, we realized that they just do the follow the law, right? Yeah, it's as simple as that, so. I motion that we eliminate, um, P B N. People who do G D R, when, so, do you wanna go through and do, so one interview? Okay, say it's, and R one, and V B N R two, they are all, um, all related to the same stuff, and, um, so I propose that we eliminate all three of them. So I made the motion to do that. That was said before, we were gonna give them this, our policies for. That's different.
For P B N?
You know, P B N, G D R one, and V B N R two.
Okay, I got some, I heard somebody say. All in favor of that, then, of course? I mean, yeah, good.
Oh, I.
Through that, right?
So, congratulations. Um.
Sorry.
Maybe a new policy, let's the three feet thick. Um, alright, so now I guess I'll go to the one that I'd like to table, and then we can then vote to accept the other ones. The one that I would like to table is E E A E A A, which is drug and alcohol testing for school and bus drivers. I did have some questions on that. Um, just because some of the wording states, um, anybody transporting over sixteen kids needs to be tested. I felt like maybe we need to type that up a little bit, so, um, we're looking into that to see if that is, if there's a reason why it says sixteen, over sixteen. Uh, yeah, so I, we're looking into that, and we may change our, you might have gotten more certain of that a lot, it's, but.
And wasn't it, um, the van drivers that?
Yes.
Tested, that would.
Yeah. Right, yeah, so the van drivers did not have to.
That's what makes sense.
Right, so, um, so we're, there's no, we're looking into that, so.
What if, uh, teachers were driving, it's, I'm looking at.
It would follow the same policy if, if law matters.
Yeah, close, it's, we're close, right?
So we're looking into that as of right now to see what, what the reasoning of is behind, why it stands the way it does, and what the remediation to lead is we kind of have. So that's what we're looking at. Um. Let him know that. Right, so we have two things we still need to nail down on that. So I would like to table that, so I move that we table that one until we have candidates to nail all that down.
And all in favor? Very good.
Alright, and then other ones as they stand. Um, so A C R, grievance procedures for persons with disabilities. K K F R, disciplinary removal of students with disabilities, administrative. B B P R, earned pay leave administrative speaker. I L A, student assessment. I M B B, exemption from required instruction. I H B A, individualized education programs. B B P, earned daily. I J T A A R, for, for old, pre-referal administrative speakers. I V B A C, which is now I D B A B, child fine. K L M, reporting child abuse in Latin. K K, student discipline, and I J O A R, field trips and excursion procedures. We have reworked a few of those, and I move that we accept those policies as cases. Okay. So let's, I need to revise that. We, in the policy as we have it stated, we are going to slap the R into I J O A. But it is still field trips and excursion, uh, field trips and excursion policies and procedures.
Awesome, then, I'll wait until we're over the edge.
Yes.
Yes, um. When it comes to swimming, I know that some schools have a policy on that, so I was looking for one today that swimming included. And I couldn't find one, and maybe add it, I just wanted to find it, but I would. I'd like you to look at that, look at considering swimming as part of field trips. Um, not that I wanna, I wanna do it for safety.
Alright.
Water safety to it, well, also.
There is, yes, water safety, um, taking, take that on, uh, trips, um, if that's on water, whether it's swimming or kayak, I mean. I just, I hadn't, I can, I can accompany with it and support with it, but, um, give you my thoughts, and we'll just say.
So.
Complement me, that probably has a lot. Policy, but now that we're just doing more outdoor stuff with kids, not that, you know, we like to be compliant, but also in some direction. For that.
Yeah, alright, so I'm going to. Back on what I said, and I would like to table I J O A R, field trips and excursion policies and procedures so that we can add a swimming and water safety component to that. So we will table that, and we will address that in our next policy meeting. I move that I can table that.
Second, second on that.
Uh, second motion.
All in favor of that? I think.
Well, I have to leave them all. So, um, so I move that we accept the other ones.
Second.
Those second, I'm not a great.
All in favor of that? That's a lot. And here we go.
Can I have? Do one, David, but we don't.
Sure.
Thanks for not even serving, it's in three years of service. You guys have been super great, your impact on school community. And we'll have our different effect, but it's, um, thank you for your careful deliberation and sort of hand thoughts, and.
Um, just saying, it really was, there was some hairy times, but for the most part, it was a pleasure, I'm proud of it, and I think it's been a great, right now, definitely is. Thank you all, and, uh, good luck.
I just wanted to, I would say a few things on that, and someone being able to explain for each, and understanding how small government works. Um, I'm a political social worker by trade, and this is the only opportunity that I have as a, a federal employee to, uh, give back to my community on a political account. And I've enjoyed the opportunity, I've, I've been getting to know more of the, uh, citizens of Wisconsin. I did not grow up here, but I appreciate the history that is here, and the people who come from that history and that children that are will be here in our district. Um, I think one thing that I really want people to think about is that this is where the real work happens, is in small government, local government, and if you can't make an opportunity to just teach and waivers about, you know, the issues at hand, uh, respectfully filing, then government is never gonna look for you. Um, this is the only way and path forward for our country, as it's so divided to move forward. And I believe that in this room, that's where it starts, and as, uh, select people, et cetera, that's where it starts, we're looking for our country to support. So I, I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity. Um, I will be gone. I still have a student in this district. I will still be here um, in different capacities as I always have since he was in kindergarten, and I look forward to seeing him play around town with a smile on his face.
Also, that's my. They're moving us just because it's the gift that you sent.
Thank you so much.
One information, Richard. When I, once I have, it was publicly stated at the last meeting that Johnson's not at the table, we don't know why, we haven't heard from him in weeks. I just want to document that Jonathan exchanged a dozen emails, the chair and the superintendent, about not being able to attend those meetings. It was told, we'll see you when you see you, and there was no feedback from the board. I asked for the fucking day that worked for everybody, we're still likely to make the last meeting work, and so just to be clear, it was not me not communicating for several weeks. I, that doesn't even send for me to focus. Quiet.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, now I will accept the motion to adjourn this meeting. Okay, second, all in favor? Alright, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
The ten for me is here.